Call to order the April 11th Chaska City Planning Commission, roll call please.
Bovee, Cross.
Here.
Dahlke.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Keport.
Here.
Fifer and Chairperson Wong.
Here. And so everyone just adjust your mics if you haven't already. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now's the time in the agenda for the visitor presentation where anyone who has something to discuss with the planning commission that is not already on the agenda may approach the bench or approach the podium. If not, then we'll move on to the next item. Item number five, minutes of March 14th Planning Commission meeting, has everyone had a chance to review said minutes of the Planning Commission meeting?
Move to adopt the minutes from March 14th.
Second.
Motion by Dahlke, second by Cross, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the February 26th and draft minutes of the March 19th City Council meeting, the January 8th and March 19th 2018 EDA meetings, and the minutes of the March 12th Park Board meetings?
Yes.
Yes. Move to adopt the consent agenda, A through C.
Second.
Motion by Kelly, second by Keport, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now's the exciting part of our lineup tonight. The concept plan for the former Hot Spot and Michael Cycles redevelopment, Alliance Contracting.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. We're looking at a concept plan request tonight specifically for 650, 700 and 710 Chestnut Street North in downtown Chaska here, and this is for a redevelopment project. So to give you an understanding of where the site is located, it is just north of the Walgreens site and east of Highway 41 or Chestnut Street North. It basically encompasses the old Hot Spot gas station site, the former Michael Cycles and Snap Fitness building, and then a smaller parking lot that is owned by the CDA building just to the east there. So they're looking at three separate lots tonight for redevelopment. So specifically, again, it's for the redevelopment of both or all three of those sites. With that, they would also be demolishing those existing buildings that are on the site, so the former Hot Spot and the Michael, former Michael Cycles building. In turn, they will construct three new buildings on that overall site. One of them is designated to be a new Dunkin' Donuts building, and then the other two are a multi-tenant building and a single-tenant building with users that are yet to be identified. The zoning district that those lots are located in are in the C2, General Commerce District, and the planned multi-use district 10. So the proposal to add more commercial and retail space in that area is consistent with the zoning that's out there for both of them. So the overall site is 1.15 acres in size, so that's all three lots being looked at together. The, where the former Hot Spot was, at one point, there was a gas canopy there and underground gas tanks which have yet been removed as of a while ago. The site itself currently has two accesses onto Highway 41 now. These are full accesses. One is a shared access with the Walgreens site to the south. The other is an access that was meant for the Michael Cycles building. The former gas station site also used to provide access into their site. So they are planning to keep those accesses as a part of this plan that you'll see later on in the site plan that I'll show. So this is the proposed site plan. Again, the accesses are still shown as before, so they're maintaining those. As you can see on this exhibit here, there are three buildings. There's one basically oriented on the Walnut Street and Highway 41 corner, and then the multi-tenant building is located in the center of the site, and then the building that's designated for the Dunkin' Donuts use is on the southern part of the site. The Dunkin' Donuts is proposing to have a drive-through component as a part of it. Basically, access into that will come off of the private shared drive on the southern portion of the site and queue about seven vehicles within that drive-through. In terms of the parking that they're providing out there, they are providing 50 parking spaces, which does not include, I should note, the small parking lot that's just to the east of the CDA building. This is specifically designated for the CDA building to continue to use. So the 50 parking spaces really only are the ones just west of the multi-tenant building and south of the Dunkin' Donuts building. So in terms of code, they do need 40, 54 parking spaces, which is dependent on the size of the retail square footage out there. So they're just about there in terms of meeting the code. So we'll work with the applicant to figure out a workable plan for their preliminary on something like that. In terms of the landscaping out there, one thing that has been of note, not only for this site but for the former application that came through for the Hot Spot site was to maintain consistent landscaping that you see on the Walgreens site and carried through this site, so maintaining that boulevard edge and same delineation of sidewalk and then the parking lot budding up against that. The corner will also have that true statement applied to it as well. In terms of pedestrian spaces out there, that was another item of note in the report that was brought up. Given the type of uses out here and pedestrians coming to the site, we didn't know that there is importance or significance in providing some seating areas or areas where pedestrians can rest on site that are going to be utilizing the site. So we have provided a couple ideas for the applicant to keep in mind as they're coming back for preliminary. So finding some space potentially in front of the Dunkin' Donuts building and in front of the multi-tenant building as well. So here's more of a 3D view of the overall site. I should note that this one's a little bit older in terms of what you see now out there. I think the only change is the color of the corner piece on the Dunkin' Donuts, but just to give you an example or a visual of how the site looks kind of from an aerial view and showing how the buildings kind of laid out on the site. I think in terms of what they've decided in terms of the orientation of the buildings and the layout, they have done a good job of really maximizing the site, especially with the corner building being pushed up to the edge, to its furthermost edge on the corner is of the most optimal orientation for that building. And then with the multi-tenant building, they did do something pretty unique in terms of how they staggered the layout of these different tenants to really provide variation and depth on that building. So overall, I think the applicant has done a good job with the layout of the site. There always has been that question of pushing the buildings up to the edge of the site to really grasp that downtown feel, but kind of given the precedence of the Walgreens building to the south of them and being in line with that streetscape, that's what they're basically carrying through for this site. And another reason is they wanted to optimize parking as much as they could, and the best layout and orientation of the buildings is basically what you see now to provide the most amount of parking spaces for the site. So with downtown being kind of known for its parking, we wanted to make sure that the site provides the most amount of parking that they can for these uses. In terms of the design of the buildings and the materials that they're using, they are planning to use a majority of brick, cementitious siding, stucco, and glass on these buildings. So in terms of what they're proposing right now, obviously we'll work with the applicant to refine what they're proposing out there, but in terms of what they're proposing for materials, it appears that they're moving in the right direction to meet the city's Building Design and Materials Ordinance. I should also note that the brick color that they're planning to use, they would like to use a Chaska brick color on all three of these buildings, which would show a consistent design throughout all three, but also show that tie-in to Chaska and its history. So we'll just work with the applicant to make sure that the blend in color stays true to that. Another item of note that I think the applicant did very well on showcasing for their application is piecing in those elements and items that you see in downtown Chaska and really showing where they could be utilized on this site. So they've gathered a bunch of different examples found on different buildings in downtown Chaska, such as some of the cornice detailing, some of the brick detailing that they plan to incorporate into the overall design of these buildings. So we feel that what they're proposing out there is definitely going in the right direction of being able to show their own identity, but also showing consistency with downtown Chaska's overall design. So in conclusion, based on what the applicant has provided for us, we do ask you to make a motion to recommend approval of the concept plan for the redevelopment of 650, 700, and 710 Chestnut Street North, based upon the conditions that are listed in your staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, otherwise the applicants are also here in the audience.
Any questions for Liz?
I have.
Yep, go ahead.
When you say that the site is utilizing the present entrance and exits, that they are really just, they moved that north one quite a bit because that's where the building is still now. So I, I'm just saying that they, they have a new, a new exit, which is fine because they've already had one. What my concern was is you said the parking that's east of the northmost building is still, belongs to.
The CDA building.
Okay. So that building per se does not have any known parking for itself? That restaurant or whatever.
This one right here?
Yes.
Well, this would be a shared parking lot.
Yeah, the big parking lot, this shared parking lot.
Yes, yes.
I'm also wondering, on the east side of the triple building or the three things, are there, is that adequate room for deliveries and so forth at the back? Or is that, or are the deliveries going to come through the front door? That space that is there, is that going to be adequate for trucks and stuff?
I'm sure the applicant can provide some clarification and response to that question.
I'm sorry, one more question. For a while, on Walnut Street between Chestnut and the other street, there was a crossing of the barrier of the median, there was a median there, and that they opened it up for a while, and now they've closed it again. I'm just trying to understand the access in and out. Is that median going to be opened again, or is it going to remain closed?
On Walnut Street?
Are you talking right here?
Right.
In between?
Yeah, there was, yes. Because I turn there all the time. Hmm?
Will remain closed.
It will remain closed, thank you.
They were doing, there was a gas main in the middle of that road?
Oh.
Any other questions, Liz?
I, I do. Liz, so the, where the Dunkin', I like with what we're doing here, we're trying to do something good for the, for what's been there. For the, where the Dunkin' Donuts is at, the grass area, is that kind of an area that needs to be that size? Is that the reason why the building shifted down? And where I'm going with this is I can see something happening with somebody being in a hurry to get their coffee and get out of there, and they rush through the parking lot and hit somebody else coming down through there. Can it wrap around back out towards Walgreens as opposed to into the parking lot again? Did you guys look at that?
I'm sure the applicant can express whether or not they did look at that orientation. And you're, you're questioning whether or not this would wrap around this way?
Yeah, can the, can the building shift over a little bit? But maybe you have to have so much green space, I have no idea.
Well, I think the other piece too is as soon as you start to wrap it around, you're pushing things back and you're utilizing more space than you need to for the drive-through, but I'm sure the applicant can probably comment on whether or not they looked into that.
That's all I have. I'm glad we're putting something there.
Yeah, I have a question. Liz, could you go back to the aerial view that, yeah, right there? This, you know, the applicant, I think did a nice job of considering context of the space and the, and that's fabulous, we love that. But there's a context piece I want to ask about here. That shared driveway between the Walgreens and the proposed development, that's going to stay in pretty much its present condition.
Correct.
There was a plan, and Kevin, maybe you can tell me if this is still planned, to essentially continue that road through the Cooper's parking lot and make that more of an official street there. Is that still on the docket?
There is some plans for how we provide continuity in the piece east of Walnut, but that has not been finalized yet.
Okay.
But that's part of the county reconstruction or, yeah, reconstruction of Highway 61 East, and so that's still in the plans, but exactly how it's designed and stuff isn't finalized.
Yeah, and just from, you know, my familiarity with that area, I walk there frequently, and that's, that spot where that driveway goes through, there's a spot where people do cross even though there's not a crossing right now. And if that becomes a real street, that might get a crosswalk, or if, even if it doesn't, would still be a spot where pedestrians would cross. And, and I, you know, I like what I see relative to the north-south treatment of pedestrian traffic. I worry about the east-west traffic because I think particularly if some of the parking in that Cooper's lot becomes city available parking for Curling Center users.
Right.
Fireman's Park users, that's going to increase that east-west pedestrian throughput there.
Yeah, the thing to remember there is where Walnut Street comes out to 41, that's where we're going to be putting the second HOCS system.
Yeah.
And so that's going to be where people are going to cross 41, and so that's really going to direct people to that intersection. That's where we want them to cross. It's not safe crossing south of there, even though you see occasionally people run across there. But by putting in that HOCS system, which is the pedestrian stoplight like we have at Pine Street now, at this location, it'll allow people to cross very safely east-west, across 41 in this location. And so the major movement that we're anticipating is east-west along Walnut Street, out to kind of the entrance to Cooper's there.
Well, and I guess my, my point in bringing it up is really to encourage the applicant to think as they think about the context of the space, about that east-west pedestrian movement. On the north side, you know, perhaps the pedestrian spaces that we talked about having a need for are not clustered around the Dunkin' Donuts, they're clustered around access and, you know, bike racks and, you know, other things to the north. And, and also just consider that pedestrian flow to the south, it's not really designed for a lot of that, but it's going to get some, and we need to consider safety and aesthetics on, on that as well, and maybe there's some pedestrian friendly areas along that side to help address the safety concerns there as well. So that, that would be my feedback for the applicant on this, this phase, so.
So Liz, for sake of this illustration, right now there's an existing crosswalk, right? Is that the, just refresh my memory, is that where the, the HOCS system will go, or is it?
Yeah, can you go to the aerial, Liz?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see the crosswalk right there.
Right.
And that's right where the HOCS system is going to go, the one that's similar to what we have out here on Pine Street that we just installed, and that's where it's going to cross, and that connects up with the major trail which is located in the park, which then connects to this whole Brickyard Development. And so people will be able to cross at 61 and 41 with the stoplight, and then also cross up here at Walnut Street and 41, and then over at Pine Street and 61. And so there'll be three places to kind of move either north-south or east-west in this general area, which, having used the HOCS system to get over to the Fireman's Park, it is stopping people on the road versus before where you were a little nervous.
Well, and your, your Dunkin' Donuts is going to be a magnet for people on that trail system, and so you got to consider the, how do they get from 41 and Walnut to the other side of the development without getting run over in a safe manner, so.
I do share some concerns though, it's like, I, I think that from a traffic perspective and, you know, like, and a lot of the analysis that was done by, you know, both MNDOT and by the city around the location there, from a traffic perspective, it completely makes sense why it's in that location. The only thing I fear is that the human psychology or someone's like, I've got to walk all the way over there to get something right there. Right? And that's always, that's the, that's the danger, right? And that's.
The danger's going to be crossing that road.
Right, and well, I mean, well, I mean, but it's, but it's that self, that self, people put themselves at risk because they're just too lazy to walk down the street.
Right, there's not a lot we can do, just given that location, to let people cross at that spot, it's too dangerous.
Yeah.
To let them cross there.
Yeah.
Otherwise, the only way to do it is underpass or overpass. It's not an accurate crossing at that mid-block location where the Walgreens access comes out there. That is inherently unsafe location for pedestrians to cross.
So I guess the.
And even our sidewalks, they parallel that, but they don't come out at a, they're not bringing you to that location, so you're going to have to try pretty hard, and some people do. I think a lot of that'll go away because I think some people view that as free and available parking, and when businesses are here, that free and available parking isn't really going to be hopefully free or available.
Yeah, because my only thought is that, you know, I know that since there, there's going to be some roadway reconstruction along, along that stretch, is that now that I'm starting to think about it, having some sort of hedgerow or something as a physical barrier to make it discourage people from crossing at that, at that point, might not be a bad idea to at least make it less palatable as an option because just like, you know, bushes or whatever, shrubs or whatever in the way there along that sidewalk area.
The plans that, I don't know if they show or not on Liz's.
Yeah, I don't know if it's on this one.
Piece there.
There we go.
Doesn't really show that well, but there is those blue.
Yeah, there's like those, like the tree planner cutouts.
Exactly.
Yep.
Which, the area closest to 41 is really a snow storage area.
Yep.
It's paved just because we can't grow anything there.
Yeah.
So in the summer, people might use that as a sidewalk, but it's really not a sidewalk. The sidewalk is really to the west of those blue dots.
Okay.
And that's really where the sidewalk is, and that's a continual piece that kind of goes through there, much like we have down on First Street, between First Street and the river, where the trail or the sidewalk is actually behind those, and that's really where we're directing people to go.
Okay.
And so that's really what that is showing on that graphic is the relocation of and reconstruction of that in there to really direct people down to cross at 61 or up and have them cross at Walnut.
Yeah, because I would say that, you know, this may be the input back into the reconstruction is to look at some way of putting something there from a, just a human psychology perspective to make it discouraging to cross at that, you know? That's, you know, this is a feedback for.
There's only so much we can do because if somebody wants to cross there, they're going to cross there, yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I agree, so.
In the, in the reconstruction, is there any, or is there just no room to put like a turn lane or a turn, I don't know if you call it a turn lane, but on the, you know, like coming from the south, you know, right now you're turning off the street right into that space, is there?
Yeah, the, the volumes aren't such that it warrants having an acceleration lane coming out of these facilities onto that roadway. People are taking acceptable gaps and accelerating because the sightlines are such that you would have that typically where you're going to find acceleration and deceleration lanes are where the volumes are higher typically where street intersections are located.
So now looking at this, so if I, so this basically reminds me that there's going to be a center median, it's like a concrete median in there, in here.
Correct.
Which means there's no left-turn movements coming into the site from effectively the front of the site.
Correct.
So if someone wants to go to the drive-through Dunkin' Donuts, they'd either have to go to, basically go to 62 or go to Chaska Boulevard, U-turn and come back, circle around the block the other side by, over by the bank, or, or make a left turn before to come back in at Walnut and then come from the backside of the building.
Correct.
Okay. Just, just to be clear about the, you know, the movements because of, it's constricted.
And the same the other way, if you're trying to go, you know, left on 61 and you miss it, you're going up to Walnut and circling back and.
Right.
But the channelization that they're showing is really required just, you know, for the safety of those intersections.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And so that was pretty thoroughly studied when MNDOT and Harper County were doing the plans for 41 and 61 in a lot of detail.
Okay, other questions for Liz? Okay, thank you. So we'll give the applicant an opportunity to approach and say a few words.
Hi, my name's Jeremy Brown, Alliance Contracting, the applicant. Matt Barrowey, Bright Pixel Design, I'm the lead designer.
Do you have to answer any questions that you have?
Anything you'd like to say about the.
Well, we're excited, I mean, we've, our development group has been in Chaska now for quite some time, involvement across the street. So our motivation behind what we saw was stagnant redevelopment, so we approached the city and said, what can we do to assist? We have the same concerns that all the commissioners have explained as far as traffic movements, pedestrian traffic, sightlines and materials. We have an investment already in the city of Chaska, we want to see that continue. So we've worked with the staff for quite some time, I can't remember how long it's been now. We've been through very many renditions, I'll let Matt explain, there is one current updated access to answer your question, Commissioner Cross. Let him explain that to you, but we're excited, we think this fits well. I think the uses that we're going to come in here with are not going to challenge the parking that we currently have, we're very responsible about that. Our intent is to not do any more food in that location or any high occupancy that will take a lot of parking. We understand we can't control where everybody parks. Being that I am across the street, I see the same things that you guys see as far as pedestrian traffic, and when we have events, they do utilize that parking across the street. So again, I think we've done the best that we can to maximize parking, ensure the success of our current tenant Dunkin' Donuts, and yeah, we're excited.
I'll just throw something out, you know, one of the things we've struggled with in prior meetings, and it's even mentioned in the submittal here, is when there are multiple buildings in a development, as to whether you handle them all at once or break them into chunks. And to the extent that there're. And to the extent that they're complementary or very similar uses and develop concurrently, there's some logic to reviewing that all as a, a, a whole. But if, if, if the tenants aren't identified, and that piece gets delayed, and then it becomes something else, and then it really doesn't make sense to consider them as a whole. So, so we kind of struggle with that a little bit too, because, you know, again, we really think that the context of the whole site matters, and, and that's part of it, so.
And we, just for, you know, information basis, we intend to be a good neighbor and build all three at one time, uh, so that when Dunkin' Donuts does come to town, they're not fighting the same thing of construction happening next door, or,
Yeah.
the neighbors to, I get my directions mixed up, the east.
Northeast.
Northeast, so they don't have to go through that maybe three times, so we understand.
And so there was two questions outstanding, one was the space in the back of the building, and the other was the exit into the parking lot.
Correct.
We'd like to talk about those.
Sure, so the, the space to the rear, we feel meets the needs, again, these are not gonna be, uh, I'll use restaurants or heavy food, for example, if there are deliveries, they could be in the front, early hours, or there is space in the back that they could wheel. I think it's gonna come down to an operating agreement, but again, the, the intended use for the multi-tenant building would not be a, a high goods or a restaurant type use, but more office or boutique type style. So again, that day-in, day-out, multi-deliveries per day, that's not the intent of our development.
So you're not really planning on like garage doors on the backside or anything, or just regular doors?
Not at all, no. It does not support that, that back area actually was discussed with the CDA, and, and, and Matt can speak to it, as a planned area where even some of the residents could come and, and congregate and sit at a picnic table.
Okay, and then the other question was about the exit into the parking lot from the drive-through?
Yes, so, you know, Matt worked with, uh, Dunkin' Donuts Corporate and the franchisee, we laid out every possible way, uh, to make that work. This, from everybody's viewpoint, including the staff that we talked to, seemed to be the most logical way to do it. The orientation of that building, the Dunkin' Donuts, based upon, uh, soil, uh, we have some existing soil issues, those contamination, and the, the recommendation from the MPCA and consultants is leave it in place, not to disturb, so that has changed over the decades, and so the more that we move that existing footprint, the more issues that we run into as far as contaminated soil, so. Again, we're following their report, I think it makes sense to have those buildings aligned. But again, if the staff or the commissioners wanted to, to look at that further, we certainly could, or maybe even show some older renditions, but, Matt, do you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, sure, can we skip to the, this conceptual site plan? So, this view right here, you, you caught this already, we're planning on moving that, uh, the curb cutoff of forty-one, or not moving it, leaving it in its current orientation, we want the traffic flow to be as similar to how it currently is as much as possible, and we don't wanna really mess around with anything that Mindot would not want, so. There is another version of this, we've kind of gone through a couple different iterations of the site plan, and the most recent one that is shown to the south about fifty or so feet, and then that pushes a few more stalls over to the north building. The question as far as getting out of the Dunkin', um, as far as studying that, the biggest like safety issue that, that we see with drive-throughs is anytime like vehicular traffic crosses pedestrian traffic, so that's really what we're trying to avoid. Vehicular to vehicular is less, less dangerous, you know, you know, you've got a cage around you. So, we're kind of, there's a tension there of which one is most important, and from a safety issue, we kind of err on the side of not crossing pedestrian traffic as much as possible. There is enough room on the site where if we wanted to come around to the east of the Dunkin' and slide that building back, we could get another driveline, uh, but then essentially what we would have is three sides of the building are surrounded by driveline, and we would see more of that pedestrian-to-vehicular intersection happening, and we're kind of trying to avoid that. It also kind of sets up a little bit more room for either green space or patio plaza, that kind of stuff, as opposed to just more driving. So that's kind of why it is where it is. Also, it lines up really nicely with the building to the south Walgreens and the three-tenant building to the north, kind of setting up a cityscape where all the buildings are pretty much in line with each other.
That really does bring up a, a good point with pedestrians, um, the corner of the building right next to the sidewalk, uh, that's where, where the exit area is coming out. If somebody were to be walking down that sidewalk, um, is there a mirror going in there, or is there gonna be a flasher? How is somebody gonna know with a car that they're not gonna, they're not gonna plow over somebody just walking through there? Yeah, yeah.
Kind of a blind corner.
Yeah.
'Cause they won't see the car coming because they're right at the, right at the, the precipice, the precipice of the building.
Handle that with signage, if we wanted to, or we could slide it back, you know, if, if you decided maybe four or five feet, or whatever, we're.
Just so people can have a little bit more visibility, and it's the same thing, you know, with the, when we get our buildings too close to the corners, you can't see a, you know, what's coming around the corner, right?
Of course, the, the other thing is too, is that interestingly enough, if it wasn't, well, if it wasn't for the soil conditions, you know, there might also be an opportunity to put a patio in front of the building, I know, just a thought, if Dunkin' Donuts was interested.
Yeah.
Then that would sort of eliminate two, kill two birds with one stone, and make an amenity for Dunkin' Donuts, for people in a nice separate day.
Let us work with them and the preliminary, just to kind of do some analysis on that drive-through, just to see exactly how you can move that around a little bit to kind of, I, I understand your issue on that corner, you know, so that pedestrians coming out or potentially walking along there, they just can't see the car because it's so instantaneous. Let us work on that with them, 'cause I mean, this is just a concept at this point, um, to try and figure that out. I think it's duly noted in the record that that's something that we should look at, uh, moving forward to the preliminary, and we can analyze some different options and try and come up with something that works for everybody, 'cause obviously it needs to be safe for everybody, and, um, and, and I think that's certainly doable on this site. I, I, I caution about pushing the building back too far, um, because then you have sightlines with Walgreens and you're kind of burying them a little bit. But I think there's room in there to meet, find a happy medium, um, that allows some visibility so people can recognize, and then also people in cars can recognize somebody coming through on a sidewalk.
I think it's a great start, yeah.
Oh, I do too.
Other questions or comments for the applicant?
So behind all of the three buildings that are kind of interconnected in an angle, is that, is that like a, I'm, I'm guess, I don't know if I heard this, it's a big patio? Or that's concrete, or what is that?
You know, right now, it's shown as concrete.
Uh-huh.
It's a lot of space that kind of just emerged, basically because we got a setback there from the property line.
Uh-huh.
Which, you know, currently, you can really see it in the satellite view, I mean, look at those two roofs, almost looks like they're touching, those buildings are really close, I mean, you walk through it, it is. I mean, it probably scales at about eight feet or so, but it, it's really tight, now you've got like thirty, you know? Looking at the other side of the site, if you would provide a variance, we could use some of that to get this ballpark happening, 'cause this is pretty tight with the ten feet for the landscaping, and then eight foot for the, the walk. Some of that space back here, I think maybe could be well-used, if we kind of stole it from here to push it over here to the west.
Could you use a mouse, I'm, I'm losing your audio, if you use a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh. Okay, okay, there we go, okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
But yes, kind of getting back to your original question, what did we call it last time, a prom, a promenade? Some sort of a, a spot for kind of breakout, you know, so this could be, it will be kind of a service area, 'cause this is gonna be kind of the back door for all of these, um, you know, three tenants in there. Uh, but yeah, we see, you know, maybe some picnic tables, could be some planters exposed to aggregate, or, you know, some, um, maybe, I don't know, bike racks, like you said, but just kind of a, a place where you could also have some, uh, pedestrian flow through there.
So, this is something we'll see more of in the next, uh, the next round.
Right.
'Cause I think bike, bike racks will be well-used in that area, I think.
Other thoughts, comments, questions?
It's a, I think it's a great opportunity area that we can work with them on in terms of trying to provide.
Kevin?
Things that were, you were talking about, um, with, uh, um, places for people to gather, whether it's the front or the back, and trying to balance those. But I think at a concept level, it gets a little tricky, 'cause we're still dealing at a scale that, um, isn't quite there yet, and so, let us work with them, uh, continue on, and, uh, I think we can come back with a, um, a proposal that's very similar to this, that, uh, really meets those issues and, uh, um, really, uh, continues to reflect and build upon what they've shown so far.
Yeah, one of the things that, just, I'll make a comment, is that, you know, I think, um, I think I'm the only planning commission member from back in the day when we actually established the, um, established the commercial building standards, and we also established a process by which we have, um, a requirement for the, um, for the, for the concept planning to be, you know, to demonstrate the understanding of site and context. And, um, and I wanted to point out that this is probably one of the, one of the best examples that I've seen since having done that, and I wanna thank you guys for taking the time to do that, 'cause it, you know, obviously showed you did your homework, uh, great illustration of doing your due diligence, and really taking time to understand, you know, the factors involved, traffic flow, pedestrians, you know, the, the sightlines, all of that. And I think this is something that I'd like to make a recommendation to staff to use this as an example for other, the other proposals that come through the process. Uh, we've had some other ones that are really good too, but this is one I'd like to ask them to add to the, to that, uh, to that portfolio, so you guys did a, a really knockout job with this on that first pass.
Thank you.
Nice job, man.
So anything else you'd like to add? Overall, you guys did a really nice job with this, for, for a first pass, this is great, so, uh, really looking forward to seeing the second pass.
Thank you.
Yep. So, let's see, so at this point, um, we'll open up to the audience if anyone has anything they'd like to add, or, uh, any questions for the planning commission? Otherwise, then we'll move on, or we'll take, we need to move on and take a motion here. Yep, so anyone like to make a motion?
Oh, oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of a consent plan for six fifty, seven hundred, um, Chestnut Street North, subject to the following twenty conditions. As to recommend that to proceed to the next step.
I'll second that.
So, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Good work.
Nice job, look forward to seeing you soon. All right, so we'll go around the horn for other business, Mr. Keepport.
I have nothing this time. I went through this crosswalk, but whatever, the other day, and I think there was, everybody's just getting used to it, and they're confused with, you know, if, if there's nobody there anymore, can they go, if it's flashing, and that type of thing, as a stop and go, and I think that was just getting people used to it a little bit with, you know, how it's, how it's working, so you don't get a ticket, that type of thing, I think people are confused with it a little bit when I see.
That's okay, because they're in two thousand pound vehicles, before we had problems with the, the people who are.
No, I think it's great, we got people to slow down.
A great transition to have people do, people can go once it starts flashing like any flashing red, once it's safe to proceed, you can proceed. A solid red, you need to stop, um, just like any stoplight, and so, um, they'll get used to it, but, um, I, I would agree, what I've seen so far, the pedestrians feel much safer.
It is a lot safer, so, good job with that, so.
Do we have a timeline on getting the Hawk system on forty-one there?
I do not know what the timeline is, because I don't, um, know, uh, the infrastructure, if the, if the infrastructure's there, or it has to be done with the construction, 'cause it has to be synced with the, uh, stoplights at forty-one, sixty-one, and I don't know if there's any, uh, um, um, cabling that exists in the roadway or not, because we have to manage when people can cross because of some of the movements that happen at intersection.
So, Mindot's supposed to start work on forty-one this coming year?
Um, no, no, it'll probably.
I saw something on a, on a newscast saying it showed.
That, that's up by Target.
Up by Target more, okay.
Correct.
So that's where they're gonna start their.
Correct, that, that project between Pioneer and two twelve will start this year.
Okay, and it, it progresses down this way, or does it go both ways, or we don't know?
That, that piece is an independent project, um, that'll take probably, I don't know, twelve months or so to build, and the project in downtown Chaska, I think is scheduled for twenty twenty-one, um, and so that's a completely separate project. And so, it'll be up, uh, by Pioneer, um, uh, this year, and then come down downtown, uh, but the intermediate parts aren't changing at all between those two. And so, it's two separate projects, um, the one up on Pioneer to go to four lanes, the one downtown to, uh, implement the downtown, uh, street section.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Yep.
Anything else?
Nope, I don't have anything else. The Hawk system, that would go in though.
Yes.
Before.
Well, I.
Are we trying to get that in conjunction with this, 'cause?
If, if we can, but I don't know all the construction details, that's why I was mentioning, Dan, that, um, it may not be possible, because it requires to be wired, um, to the signals, and the signal improvements at, um, forty-one and sixty-one, and I, I don't know how that all comes together yet. So, I know they wanna do it as soon as possible, but I don't know what as possible means.
And do you record those costs associated with it, depending on which way you go?
Yeah, I don't think it's really a cost, I think it's a construction detail of when to get it done, and when's the right time to do it.
Okay.
And the, the only other thing I have, since we're on the air, and hopefully there's people watching, uh, one of my, one of my other roles in town is I'm the, I'm the president of the Chaska Lions Club, and I just want to make everyone aware that the Waconia Lions Club is in charge, but all the Carver County Lions Clubs are working on, uh, on April twenty-fifth, we are sending a hundred and thirty-eight veterans to Washington DC for the day. It's a day trip, they leave early in the morning on the twenty-fifth, and they come back on the twenty-fifth. They will be back in Waconia about nine thirty PM, and twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday night, and there's gonna be a parade when they get back to town, and we would love to have as many people as possible show up for that parade. When these guys get back, there'll be a hundred and thirty-eight guys going, you know, be, and besides volunteers that are going along, and, uh, they did this, Waconia did this eleven years ago, and it was very successful, and this is a bigger endeavor, and, uh, we would love to get, line the streets, uh, where, you know, where they're gonna be coming back down, so, it would be, love to have you show up.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's on the Waconia Lions Club page, it's probably on the City of Waconia page as well. There are a lot of Chaska vets involved in this as well, it's Carver County.
Right.
So, it's an important, uh, it's a big deal, it's a big deal for us, so. That's it, very cool.
I don't really have something quite for Chaska. I drove on Bavaria past the new micro, um, development that Victoria's doing on, called Hill Point, on the Vanderlinde property, just north of Chaska. And I'm just, have a small concern about if they are carelessly or accidentally dumping stuff onto Chaska property, because they've got such a huge mound of dirt. It wouldn't be really our concern as so much as the, the people that have owned the property, but, um, this is, what I best see as the first time that Victoria is crossing, um, Bavaria with sewer and water. And I'm wondering if, if maybe sewer can wander over to our project, uh, at the wedding event center. But, as I say, it's new, and it's the first time they've crossed with sewer and water, and it might be helpful in the future for some of our problems. That's all.
Liz? Kevin?
I'm good.
Couple, a few minor items, uh, for anyone who's watching out there, uh, we are still looking for two members of the planning commissions, there's two open seats available, so if anyone's interested in applying, well, you guys aren't allowed to apply again, so, you know? 'Cause you're already here, you can only have one chair at a time, sorry. But if you know anyone who'd like to apply, or who think it'd be a good fit, feel free to recommend them, or to ask them to apply. And, you know, certainly anyone who's welcome to apply, um, to contact City Clerk Denise, what was the last name?
Jensen.
Jensen, Denise Jensen.
Wetzel.
Nope, sorry, Denise Wetzel, I'm sorry, so Denise Wetzel. Um, and contact Denise Wetzel, the city clerk, for more information, we'll get you an application form. Let's see, there's, um, it's Minnesota. Let's see, there's, it's Minnesota, we're famous for our two seasons, winter and construction. And unfortunately, there's also a season smack dab in the middle in between those, which is pothole season. So we're kind of in the middle of that too, so I notice there's a lot of potholes popping up in different places, especially some of the, the retail parking lots and things like that, and occasionally streets and stuff. So ask everyone to watch out and, you know, be patient as, I know road crews are working on trying to get those potholes fixed once we finally stop snowing someday this year, hopefully, so. And hopefully, winter will actually end. And also, I'd like to give a big congratulations to Hazel Team for landing the twenty twenty-eight Ryder Cup as well. So, that's a, it's a pretty unusual accomplishment to actually have two Ryder Cups, which, and to have in, you know, in effectively, what, twelve years apart, it's a pretty big deal, so.
It's never happened in the United States.
Yeah, so that's, that's a huge accomplishment, so, it says a lot about our community and the club, all the members of, all the members of our community and everyone who's supported this, so I think it's, everyone should be quite proud of that. I know that there's always a vocal discussion about what's good for our community, but I think overall, it's something that has generally benefited our community, so. Congratulations to Hazel Team, and except for that, I think that is it. So, anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, we have a work session right after this.